Okay, welcome to the. I do it again. Welcome to the Thursday, January 12, 2023 work session. Do I hear adoption of the agenda? We move second, hold them favorably say I. Nice, nicely, thank you, and we're gonna turn it over to our finance director Ms. Ron and council discussion topics tonight is finance department budget positions. All right, I think you should sit up.
This is a fantastic. It's okay.
Just wanna make sure everybody get here.
Yeah, I'm not. And so I will. First going to put a presentation for me. Thank you so much. So, okay, so finance is looking at our budgeted positions due to the expansion of the point four FTE that was adopted in the budget. In addition to a retirement that we have of a twenty year employee. So with that, that role that she had is called the payroll and utility billing analyst, which are two kind of, okay, two very unlikely positions to have as one person completing in a finance department. So with the expansion of the point four FTE to support the municipal courts with some of their month end reconciliation duties. I'm basically bringing this forward as a conversation on the work session to to show you how our department is structured through org charts currently and possible proposed changes that we would like to make and then show you. I'm just giving you, it's the full preview right up front before I get into the slides. Show you that financially it will not have an impact. It still aligns with everything that we've discussed and that has been adopted within the budget. It's just changes on how we get there, similar to what when everybody, I guess there was a handful. When the police department went to the lieutenants when I first came, so that was about three and a half years ago. When they made that structural change to to go to a lieutenant structure from what they had prior to that, which I am not able to quote, and then the public works most recently did it with aligning to more appropriately how well now it's finances turn. But yes, so if we can walk into the next slide, this is how the finance department is currently structured through an org chart. So it's a little. If the finance director and then it goes the payroll, I probably should have the and slash utility billing analyst, which is the employee that's retiring. The accounting supervisor that is supervises two point six FTEs that are both considered accounting clerks. And then IT kind of stands alone. And so with this, the addition, this is the current structure. This is not the addition of the point for the addition of the point four was to take the accountant's position that is budgeted and take it to a point one FTE. So if we could possibly walk to the next slide. So the finance department, the proposal is to change it so that it looks a little more like this. The finance director and then it goes down to the accounting supervisor, which then it so it kind of appropriately goes down. Now, what you'll notice is that there's two positions called finance specialist. And that is not an accident. The goal here is to take, which on the next slide, we will show this, what was adopted in the budget on positions. So is to take the accountant's position and the utility billing and payroll position. Take those wages, merge them together and have what we call a finance specialist position, but then it will be two FTEs. The goal in walking into and changing the name to a finance specialist position. Currently, we want to be the payable position, which we will need to, the payroll position and the accountant. What we're defining is the accountant role on this will be the one supporting municipal courts. So that's gonna be the additional point for FTE that was adopted through the budget to support municipal, it's within the finance department, but it's to support a different department and help them make sure that their their stuff aligns. And so that's the best step one, and then the finance specialist, the second finance specialist would be the business tax, business licensing. And the AP, which I did shorthand is accounts payable. So on this, we would also still have an accounting clerk, which would be utility billing, which would be the point six FTE, which is similar to what we have now. So the accounting supervisor would be supervising two point six people. Which FTE wise is exactly what was budgeted. And then if we can go to the next slide and I probably could have put a disclaimer here that we're probably gonna shift maybe back and forth between the work chart and this. For the discussion is my anticipation. So currently, what's in the adopted budgeted positions on the salary schedule? And this is the twenty twenty-three numbers is the accountant and the utility and payroll analyst. And so basically what we're doing is we're attempting to take that's the step one through six, take both of those salary scales. Merge them together. So we're calling it a finance specialist, which you can see right below at the two FTEs, that's not changing, but you can quickly see that on step, basically every step, those two are merged, the two monthly pay scales are merged. And then if you walk down to the, this is the annual. Just because the reason why I did both is you have the monthly that is adopted on the actual pay schedule. So what has been adopted through the budget is monthly, but we don't, it's hard for us to look at those numbers and and most people to just say, oh, that's, you know, at the top step, it's seventy-two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. So we took this out to an annual basis to make this quite a bit easier for everybody. And then show just at step six that each one of those that that the net change is still staying, it hasn't changed at all. There is no financial impact to what has been adopted to the budget. It's just more of how we're gonna get there and what we're gonna call the positions. And I wanna take a minute here to to add that through calling this a different position name, the goal is to have, you know, bigger efficiencies in our department and being able to cross train with one another, being able to have a backup to everything we do. And in a smaller city, that's really important. We are a small department, but we still need to be able to back each other up on everything we do. And so it's cross training, it's backing each other up when we take vacations or out due to unexpected, the not so planned. Hence, the accounting supervisor hitting the deer, this, you're on a motorcycle. That stuff that we have a backup plan and somebody else is able to step in and do her job functions while we're out. And that's the bigger picture goal here is to be able to have everybody have a backup. And through a lot of discussions with HR, this is how we have felt is the best way to go about merging the two positions, having two positions called the same thing with job descriptions that will go back and forth with both and to create a lot of efficiencies, a lot of, you know, just making sure that everybody has a backup. I'm probably the only one that won't have a backup, but we have to be administrator, he will be my backup. I'm not sure if I'll my accounting supervisor will take on agenda covers and whatnot, but we've got another plan for that if that happens. So and other people that have that skill set to to take it on. And so at this time, I think I will stop talking and move it to asking questions about the desired change.
Just a question. So the currently we've got the the full FTE utility payroll combo, and then we have three others, one full FTE, two point six FTEs. In the, in this old, all three, the one FTE and the two point six FTEs were all under the accountant's role.
Sure, is that, can we go back to the the first one?
One more, one more. Thank you. So so supervisor clerk clerk, those would have all been just the accounting.
Yes, and I don't like the way this is structured. I do not, personally, I believe that a payroll utility billing analyst should be reporting to an accounting supervisor.
Numbers like the dollars. So this, this had the higher dollar amount for the payroll utility. Now, the three others shared the other category of accountant at the slightly at the lower.
So the the changes that are happening in the financial side.
But I just asked about the exist, the existing, they are all under the same pay schedule, correct?
So supervisor clerk clerk. That's accounting clerk and I, no.
Okay, see, so I'm trying to figure out that. So you showed us the the dollar amount comparison, but I didn't see these positions listed on current. So I'm trying to figure out.
So if we, if we walk back to the next, so currently, the way that it's showing.
It just got dollars. I wanna connect old dollars to new dollars. And the only dollars I have are two categories. And then if there's more than two categories of dollars, I wanna know all the categories.
Go to the next slide, that one. Perfect. Thank you. So you, we currently have two accounting clerks and one of them was budgeted as an accountant.
Okay.
And so, but we budgeted and we, we need a the skill set that's going to be needed in order to complete what it is we need to completely knew we could not do with at an accounting clerk line wage scale. So the the accounting clerk wage scale was always budgeted as a point six FTE, which for the accounting clerk and then the accountant. So the ask was to expand the accountant to a full one point O during the budget process.
Okay. And so the dollars that have been budgeted. So what's the accountant supervisor?
That's a full separate.
And that's, so that's not changing from line item to line item. So we're just not looking. And then what about the second accounting clerk?
So that's, that's what I'm saying. So the, there was the accountant. And there's two accounting clerks. And so what was budgeted before was an accountant at point six and accounting clerk at point six. But when previously people in positions were hired, more appropriately, they were both hired with skill sets as accounting clerks.
What's the dollar for accounting clerk?
The the accounting clerk. So when we make this change to go to the municipal court, he, an accounting clerk could not.
That's the only set. I just wanna know what their existing dollars are, cuz I'm seeing this math seeming to work for two FTEs, but we have five point two FTEs and five point six FTEs in the T S. So of those five point two current FTEs.
Correct.
Is it? I wanna make sure I'm getting the right number.
Only the only, the expansion is on the accountant line, on the accountants.
Even though we can.
I don't think you guys are.
Talking the same. No, no, we're not. Okay, so you got your, your, your thing. This person is making the, in the top line, utility and payroll analyst budgeted steps, right? This person is being paid the accountant budgeted steps, but at currently at point six, planned at one point O. What? How much money are these? What are, what are their categories?
The accounting supervisor?
Yeah. I know that may not be changing, but.
So the accounting supervisor is not changing at all. Okay.
So that's kind of staying equal between the two.
That, yeah, that's, sorry. So that's off the table as far as the discussion.
Because we don't have an accounting supervisor.
We do.
Right, the the fourth position at the top. So like two finance specialists and a utility person in your current, propose, in your proposed twenty-three, but.
Can you go back one? I'm so sorry. No, no, no. Can we go back to the first word chart?
The second word chart. In this, we have accounting supervisor at the time. Okay, that one stays the same. So then the the two finance specialists have the new one, the accounting clerk. So this, so I get that. I know where these guys are. What's this person? The second accounting clerk. What are their, what's their dollar category?
So what was, okay, so what was budgeted and what we were the, what we were paying are were two people on the accounting clerk line, but what was in the budget was a point six on the accountant line. So the expansion dollars wise, just dollars wise.
Is this person being this on the same pay scale as that person?
And a clerk versus an accounting clerk versus an accountant?
Well, I don't use that list as counting clerk, both on your current.
That is, that's the, that is what we currently have.
Okay. I think I might, I need to go this one.
So the dollar price for what was budgeted is just the expansion of the point four, which was already approved in the original budget.
Yeah, I'm kind of putting that aside as a separate thing. I'm, I'm, I'm not looking at total dollar amount. I wanna know their monthly. Do you understand? Cuz
first work chart.
The first order, thanks. So I have a counting supervisor and two accounting clerks.
Right. So what, so what I'm saying is one of those accounting clerks was budgeted as as an accountant.
Okay, and the other accounting clerk was budgeted as an accounting clerk. Okay, and how much do they, I don't have their dollar chart up there.
Because that's not what what's changing.
This day has pretty.
That's the, that financial piece isn't part of what we're trying to change.
So you got four people there that are accounting. Right? And if you go to the next line, you have four people in accounting. I'm so.
Maybe if I could go through the board, maybe I can try to clarify this.
Thank you. Oh, it's a what smart word in it?
Well, I'll try to touch anything. So basically, what you're saying is Lindsay, Beth, Aaron are staying totally the same.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
And then the bottom accounting clerk is staying as a point six accounting clerk. And then it's these two positions that are being blended or averaged together to form two new equivalent finance specialists.
Yes.
And have a point four to that. Yeah, so plus blended together with a point four boost FTE. So is that the summary of what's happening?
And so maybe I confused the case by, I probably should have put, even though I was giving you the true picture of that both of those positions are the accounting clerk. I think this would have been less confusing had I put the accounts payable as the accountant. I think that.
Yeah, cuz I'm not, I wouldn't, their words weren't matching from slide to slide. I couldn't connect them. Okay. So that's what we're doing. Okay, so and then accounting clerk doesn't change, changes in activity, but doesn't change.
And the way the dollars and we're budgeted.
Oh, so I'm so sorry.
So I have a private question. When you use the term accountant, does that mean the first time I see here?
That was just a title and that's part of why we wanted to go away from that title because really what we're doing in government is more finance related. It has a lot of different parts versus when you call something an accountant, that's just a very narrow. We wanna make sure that it's trying to reflect more accurately the duties of the job. And so by widening the the job title to a finance specialist, it's trying to change and and go to a more, a truer scope of what's being of the skill set that we're looking for instead of a cap.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. Lindsay, this is great. I, I really love this and I love the idea of as a small organization, cross functionally training everybody. So there's backups. Everybody has to pitch in and we know that things happen. So it's really important for everybody to be trained up on various things or training laterally or whatever, especially the small department. I think this really makes a lot of sense. Talk to us a little bit about improvements in workflow. Because it seems like this makes more sense to me than the previous workflow standpoint.
It, it does. And it does. And I, I will say this. I, I worked with Beth a lot on this, on, on the true, the bigger vision of the department with her because I really see her as my partner in this. And she has managed much larger teams. And that's, so her, her two cents in this was really important to me, but my biggest thing is just making sure. I keep joking and you're gonna laugh at me because I'm gonna bring this up. I think in a department that's small like ours, we wanna be able to move it, move them, you know, have all the duties that the department needs to have done in a daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly and annual basis, be able to be interchangeable by people. And so how do we get there? With only having a very limited staff, and this is the solution of moving to this, find these finance specialists. This is what we, I mean, this is what we think will be a, a, a best fit to start. But the goal is that if it's not, that we are able to own that and be able to move it around to make sure that we do have what will work the most efficiently to not create more work for one position versus another and try to have a very balanced workload amongst employees so that one position is not completely overwhelmed with too much versus another position not having enough on their plate. And so this is, again, what we think is the appropriate balance to start. And if it doesn't result in being perfect, then this gives us the, I guess, the appropriate latitude to make those changes and within the department. And that's the ultimate goal is to be able to make things as efficient as possible with the FTE counts that we are allowed.
Thank you. Thanks for your answer, Senator. I appreciate your presentation. One of the concerns I always have is that, you know, I'm, I'm hoping Beth is here for a very long, long time. But should we, you know, have to replace her? When you write the job description, will it be easier to describe the job description of the current structure that we have?
Yes. Yes, it. It absolutely will because all of these duties are not a hundred percent unique to the city of Lake Forest Park. Every governmental most with business tax probably being the one thing that is, you know, for our size and and the things that we have approved. That, that all of these job descriptions are and tasks are going to be pretty similar amongst all government entities.
Okay, yeah, thanks, yeah. This all seems very sensible. If you go back to the original org chart, I noticed there's no names listed for either of the accounting clerks. Are those positions currently staffed or vacant?
They are, they are currently staffed.
Okay, and just something I just wanna make sure when these positions are changed, is there any employee who would see either a reduction in FTE or a reduction in salary?
Not a reduction, then we're expanding.
Okay, no, I just wanna make sure cuz that could become a bitter pill to swallow if someone loses salary because of rework.
That is not the.
No, I'm not asking this question.
I'm like, no, wait.
Just the, the retiring physician, that physician would then go, but that person's retiring. So then they wouldn't see the reduction.
There will, yes, that, that's why this is, that's why this is coming forward at this time, because it's more appropriate to do these transitions when physicians are not. That's part of why this is coming forward with the expansion of the point four and the retirement, it seemed appropriate to evaluate, reevaluate the department currently as a construction.
Some question, the new descriptions, do you feel, given the the kind of current labor market, that these are separated in such a way that they would be appealable to candidates looking to work in finance?
I guess, yes, in fact. Trying to put a, a job description out for payroll and utility billing is what, those are back to, those are two skill sets that typically you do not see in with one position. So I'll just say that this is where smaller cities take, start to tailor job duties around people instead of needs of department in the bigger. And that is a result of, it was tailored around the person and their abilities. Which unfortunately, when a position like that retires, it creates a challenge to figure out how you're gonna fill a position like that, because they're two very different skill sets.
Thank you.
Well, actually, I had exactly the same question. Thank you very much. So, yeah, I, so, but I'll just follow up with what does the job mark, what, what does it look like out there as far as recruiting? Do you feel that this may take a while or do you think?
Hopefully not.
Okay, well, I know we all was hope not, but I'm realistically.
Hopefully not, because we right now are going to be kind of expanding during the transition. Expanding one of our accounting clerks to to take over the utility billing to transition, and I will be doing payroll. So the goal is for to not have your finance director doing payroll. So back to the challenges of a small department.
So, so you have a backup plan and it could take longer than you hope.
Yes.
Actually, I'm doing a. It's already been a day ago.
Yes. We're all doing HR, we're all. This is where you just step in and you and you, yes. And so the, the goal is to, yes, it could be challenging with hiring positions, which is a challenge out there right now, but hopefully if we get at least one of the positions and we get it filled that we should be, you know, in a much you have too strong between myself and Beth, there is a lot of experience there. And so hopefully we can bring somebody in that is, does have experience, which would minimize the amount of training that would take place.
Right, but you just have one hire today. You, of course, you, you're, yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh, just from my perspective, you know best what responsibilities are, the duties, needs and the skills that they place in the head and it's budget neutral.
Well, good. Scott's member Bodie. Have you have any questions, council member Bodie?
No, I don't. Thank you very much. I came in in the middle. I appreciate council member Goldman's explanation. So that helped me track what was going on and I appreciate my colleagues' comments and our budget director, our finance director's responses. So I have nothing I can add to this or or additional questions. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Yeah, I wouldn't actually give a hand of Larry, too. I was pretty lost in this. Yeah, I wouldn't actually give a hand at all, Larry, too, I was pretty lost in this.
Next time, we'll just, yeah, I didn't even think about getting up and going to the board, so.
Okay, so any other questions or there's nothing else at this time, I guess, well.
Well, actually, they, uh, they got some sort of small cities creating jobs. We got that.
We got that.
Okay. It happens in larger organizations, too.
It it happens to big women and and pushing, you always have to ask yourself, it is, and I've been asked, so, we saw it is. Okay, this is what you're doing, if that person leaves, what's your plan? We got to have a plan, in a larger organization, that's a lot easier, in a small organization, it's hard to have another plan.
Yeah. Answer the second one, so, okay, so you have other questions, I guess, well, I adjourned and.